Exactly right. Ladies and gentlemen, it is six o'clock and I'd like to call the June 3rd, 2021 meeting of the Columbia County Planning Commission to order. Sir, if I could ask you to please remove your hat while you're in the meeting. Thank you very much. If you'd stand with us, Commissioner Wilder will lead us in our invocation, Commissioner Fuch will lead us in the pledge.
God bless us. Hey Lord, we thank you for yet another beautiful day. We ask, thank you for the blessings that you bestow on this community, on our state, upon this great country. Of course, blessed that you look over those that serve in this community, look over us, our first responders, and our military folks that look out for the country as a whole. Blessed that you look over us tonight, guide us, give us wisdom, the right direction on our decisions, and all these things in Jesus' name we ask. Amen.
Pledge and leave.
My life. For the public.
One nation.
Thank you. And if I could remind you to please silence your cellphones. We do have four or five commissioners present tonight. Commissioner Henderson had to be away on personal business, which will actually take up a little later in the meeting. Gentlemen, you've had an opportunity to review the minutes from the May 20th, 21 meeting. If there are no changes or amendments, I need a motion for approval.
So moved.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. And we've also had an opportunity to review the agenda tonight. We do have one thing we need to add to the agenda that we have not discussed. And that would be me reading Commissioner Henderson's resignation letter into the agenda. And I guess at the same time, we would deal with a nomination for a vice chair to replace Mr. Henderson.
Yeah, let's add that in to do that tonight so that we'll have that moving forward for the rest of the year.
Okay, so where would we need to add that into the agenda?
Add that. For presentations.
Okay, so the next.
Yeah.
Got it.
Next item.
Okay, so gentlemen, with that amendment in addition to the agenda, can I have a motion for approval?
So moved.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
All in favor? Motion to approve the amended agenda passes four zero. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to clarify that the planning commission is a recommending body to the Columbia County Board of Commissioners. Decisions made on rezoning and variance requests tonight will be forwarded to the Commissioners for final action on June 15th, 2021 at 6:00 PM in these chambers. You wish to address the Board of Commissioners at their meeting, please see Ms. Carol Harden, and she'll give you a request to speak for them for that meeting. We're less formal in this meeting. If you have an issue at either under our public hearing section, or if we move to public comments and you'd like to make a comment on something other than what we've got on the agenda tonight, please raise your hand. We'll ask you to come forward to the microphone. And if you take three to five minutes to give us your opinion for or against, or on whatever issue you have, we'd appreciate your participation. That being said, I would like to read a note from Commissioner Henderson, who is Gary Richardson's appointee to as his representative from District Two. Dear Mr. Chairman, it's with regret that I must submit my resignation, excuse me, District Three, not District Two, that I must submit my resignation as District Three Planning Commissioner. As you know, my son was killed in a car accident last July. In that moment, my life changed completely. He is survived by two boys, seven and nine, of which I have taken up the task to fill my son's shoes as the father figure in their life. I've spent the last year going to ballgames, running school park, carpool, playing catch, and many other activities I know they need in their life. I've made every effort to maintain my responsibilities as planning commissioner, but my new schedule will not allow it. I must focus on bigger priorities. It's been an honor to serve the county over the last six years. I hope all involved believe it was worthwhile. Sincerely, Rich Henderson Senior, Planning Commissioner, District Three. And Rich has been a great asset on the planning commission, and his son was killed in a car wreck, I believe over Fourth of July weekend about a year ago. And left two sons, and it's been a burden on him, I know, trying to keep up with his duties and running a business the size he does and having the responsibilities. It's been admirable. He even went to the time and expense to get a pilot's license to try to fly back and forth to continue the service, and it's just, his family priorities are coming first, and honestly, that's the way it should be. We'll miss him, and I appreciate him sending this. There is a provision in the county code that if someone misses three meetings in a row, that they're automatically removed from planning commission. And next week would have been his third meeting, or was this his third meeting? This is the third meeting, so rather than him just fade away, we wanted this for the record, so if he wants to serve in the future in some capacity, he's got this on his record as opposed to just not showing. So again, if you see Mr. Henderson, if you know him, pat him on the back, because he needs your thoughts and your prayers. With that being said, he did serve as our vice chair. And on a personal note, I may or may not be here next meeting. I'm having shoulder surgery next Wednesday, so if I'm still suffering from anesthesia brain, on Thursday, I won't be here. So I think it would be appropriate this time to open the floor for nominations for a vice chair to replace Mr. Henderson. Do we have a nomination for vice chair?
Mr. Chair, I nominate Commissioner Al Dempsey, vice chair.
Okay, do we have any other nominations? Do you hear a second for Al?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor of Mr. Dempsey being vice chair?
Got to vote for you, sir.
Four zero. Will you accept, sir?
Sir.
All right. Have we done things appropriately for the record?
That's enough of government work.
All right, thank you, sir. I appreciate it. And I appreciate you all indulging me on that.
We are more informal here.
Yeah. We have no unfinished business. We do under new business. We have two items with Ms. Mystery. We have an architectural review for Autozone and an architectural review for 5148 and 5150 Bluegrass Trail.
Yes, sir. The first one is Autozone. Location is 430 Lewiston Road, Zone C2, general commercial. And the reason they're here is because of compliance with the zoning condition. This is the location. It's actually on the north side of Longhorns. Here is the site plan. And here are the elevations. So one of the things that we've discussed with them along the way is the location of windows. They do have some natural, windows for natural lighting on the top, and then some dark glass windows where they can't have natural lighting. But they have got stone and brick on the building, and they did add metal trolleys and awnings for adding interest to the elevations. These are the other two sides. And this is a photograph of the inside, just to explain why they don't have windows at the lower levels. And this is an image of a typical Autozone store, and it shows where they have the glass on the front and then the metal trolleys on the sides, and that's just for illustration. The staff recommends approval.
Gentlemen, do you have any questions? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the architectural review for Autozone at 430 Lewiston Road.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Ms. Mystery, architectural review 5148 and 5150 Bluegrass Trail.
Yes, sir. This is an architectural review for a retail store. It's one of the out parcels at the Kroger Development Grove Town, 5148, 5150, Bluegrass Trail, Zone C2, commercial, and this is also is a compliance with the zoning condition. This is the location. It's actually between Kroger and Panera Bread. Here is the site plan, and you will see that this side is actually the front, which is facing the Kroger parking lot, and Bluegrass Trail is across the north side. This is the typically, I mean, the front elevation that's facing the parking lot. They're using finishes and materials that match the Kroger center. And these are the other elevations, and the one in the middle is the one facing Bluegrass Trail, and we've had several conversations with them about screening, and screening of utilities and the steps, and they are using a wood screen to do that. And these are the finishes they're using, an illustration of the wood screen wall. And staff is recommending approval with conditions.
I believe that's wrong. Five?
Approval with conditions. The landscaping will be coordinated with the county landscape architect to create an attractive visual screen. Long Bluegrass Trail to protect the public view. Number two, with the tenant outfit of the building permits, any additional screening of equipment or utilities required shown on the plans and elevations to ensure that adequate screening is incorporated into the design to protect the public view.
Gentlemen, are you all seeing the same thing I am with the provisional home occupation?
Yeah.
We got the wrong slide up. Okay, that's fine. All right, gentlemen, do you have any questions? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so we need a motion to approve, deny, or to table. Mr. Chair, go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions the architectural review for the Kroger out parcel building at 5148 and 5150 Bluegrass Trail.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries four zero. Ms. Montgomery, professional home occupation for Christie's Chop Shop.
Yes, sir. This is a provisional home occupation request at 3952 Gordon Highway, currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural.
And if Clay Whittle has anybody in here, this is a hair salon.
So this is the location of the property on the south side of Gordon Highway. And the aerial of the site, this is the existing house and the shop building. The applicant is proposing a one-chair salon in a room within the building marked there with the X. And she has submitted some photographs, I believe, of that room as well. So she is operating a one-chair salon. This is an allowed home occupation, so if she was doing this inside her house, y'all would never see it. It would come through just as a normal business license request. Since she is using the room in the accessory building, it does require the provisional approval. All of the activity will take place inside of this building, so there should not be any impacts to any neighboring properties. She is operating by appointment with approximately five customers a day, so it does meet the trip requirements for a home occupation. And the hours of operation would be 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM Tuesday through Friday, and 10:00 AM to 1:00 PM on Saturday, and staff is recommending approval.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the provisional home occupation for Christie's Chop Shop at 3952 Gordon Highway.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Question? All in favor? Approve carries four zero. Mr. Butler, final plat for Kaioke Point.
Mr. Chairman, it's a request for a final plat for Kaioke Point out of County Line Road for 14 lots, approximately 110.34 acres, currently zoned RA Residential Agricultural. Staff will be recommending an approval with conditions. Shows the location of the property in County Line Road. Implicates it might be next to another county. This is McDuff County and Columbia County here. Shows the zoning of the property, again, currently zoned RA Residential Cultural, as is everything else out there, and the aerial view of the site. Also, the final plat, so again, you have 14 lots in total. All these lots meet lot and structure requirements for RA. There is a condition with the approval in regards to driveway permits. That is something that we've seen very recently, has been required. There will be a driveway permit process in the very near future. This is kind of taking place of that while that process is completed. And again, staff recommends approval with condition of the plat. I'm not going to read what all that is, but basically, your driveway is going to require a permit essentially, reviewed by engineering services. That's what staff recommendation.
Could we go back? I've got a question. Could we go back to the plat?
Backspace.
Too far. One forward. I'm sorry. So on lots, what, 7A, B, 9 and 10, and 11, where will access be off Watson Bailey Road? Okay, so are we going to require them to build on one side or the other of the easement, or is that even a consideration for the power line?
Oh, the power line easement? Well, they can't build in that anyway, so they have options.
I know they can't build in it, but are they going to have to build, are they going to build in front of it, are they going to build behind it, or do we have to specify that? It's up to them?
That's them. Wherever they pleased, outside of that easement, as long as they meet building setback.
Okay, got it.
By the looks of 11, they're going to have to build behind it.
Okay.
Yeah.
Probably the only ones they could build either or.
Right, okay. Gentlemen, any other questions? Okay, this is not a public hearing, so I'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve the final plat for Kaioke Point with conditions.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries four zero. Mr. Butler, file RZ 210604, minor S1.
Thanks, it's a request for minor S1 revision for a posed fire pit and pergola structure. This is for St. Teresa of Avila Catholic Church at 4921 Columbia Road. Shows the location of the property on the north side of Columbia Road. Currently zoned S1. We saw this come in for revision last year as well. Now, the photo there was the aerial before, it's the existing site. And then the next one will be the plat itself. And also, this is the approved site plan from last year. We'll see it here in a moment. The pergola and fire pit are going to be basically in that area there. This is a very minor request. It is a structure. It's one of those things that barely cleared the bar to require minor revision. Again, staff has no issues with.
The pergola or fire pit?
The pergola did. Yeah, well, this is the site plan here. Again, it shows the location of it, and also the current picnic shelter that was part of a revision a few years ago. And future land use, again, residential area, our residential, our neighborhoods, excuse me, for future land use, but a church isn't allowed use within that, so no issues with that at all. And staff recommends approval of the request for the minor S1 revision.
This is not a public hearing, so gentlemen, we'll need a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Chairman, I make a motion to approve file RZ 210604, minor S1 revision at 4921 Columbia Road.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Ms. Mystery, let's enter into a public hearing, file RZ 210601, Part One and Part Two. You want to present those at the same time, but we'll vote separately?
Yes, yes, sir.
Okay.
So I'll be presenting the S1 rezoning and revision together, because we have added a request to table. But I will go through the application briefly. So the location is 561 and 571 Baker Place Road, on a total of 20.5 acres. The current zoning is R2, M1, and S1. And the request is for rezoning to S1 and a revision to S1 for a church and expansion and associated uses. Here is the location, which is south of the retreat at Baker Place subdivision. This is zoning map. The orange S1 is what was rezoned in 2018. And this is a close-up of the aerial and the plat. And here is a proposal with the building on the north parcel and recreation fields on the south. And let's just go to the next one, because that's a little easier to see. So the red buildings, the red squares are the buildings, and the green is the recreation and lawn spaces with some parking. Just to summarize, there was a staff meeting with the applicant and engineer this morning, and it was to discuss the engineering related to traffic. So based on some issues with how the traffic is going to work, best way forward at the moment is to table for four weeks, so that the engineers can work out what needs to be done. So that's basically where we're at at the moment. Otters, it's like, what is this?
They want to table till July 1?
Yes, sir.
All right, gentlemen, this is a public hearing, but do you have any questions before we open up the floor? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Is there anything you'd like to add to Ms. Mystery's presentation? Okay, thank you. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against either one of these rezonings? Even though the applicant's asked to table, we still have to conduct the public hearings if we were going to go forward with it. So seeing none, I will close the public hearing, accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table until July 1.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table to July 1, RZ 210601.
Okay, do you hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries to table, carries four zero. And again, I'd like to open the floor again for file RZ 210601, Part Two. Is there anyone that would like to speak for or against? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table Part Two until July 1.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to table until July 1, RZ 2101, Part Two.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor? Motion to table till July 1 passes four zero. Ms. Mystery, file RZ 210602, conditional use for daycare.
Yes, sir. This is a location at 208 Flowing Wells Road. It's a conditional use for a daycare. And the current zoning is PDD Plan Development District on a total of .81 acres. Here is the location right across from the school on Flowing Wells. The blue is the side. It's a zone for a PDD professional. Here is the aerial, and currently they were operating personal care homes on this site, which are currently now vacant. Here's photographs of the site. And here is the plat. So the request is for conditional use for a daycare, which the owner would like to have allowed on both buildings on this property. They will be doing early care and learning for pre-K and childcare centers. Daycare facility with approximately 25 to 30 children. And depending on the exact sign of the site and parking and the amount of buildings they can use, it will be up to a maximum of 57 children. There'll be approximately four to five employees, and the exact number will depend on the business. The hours of operation are 7:00 to 7:30 PM, 7:00 AM to 7:30 PM, and that's to accommodate working parents. So interesting thing to note on this is that the Brookwood Street, which is marked there, is actually closed between Flowing Wells and Pinehurst from 7:45 AM to 7:45 AM, and from 3:15 PM and 4:14 PM, Monday to Friday for the school use. The applicant will indicate that parents will have information about the road closure in their documentation, and they will actually take the children to the corner for pickup and drop off.
Can you indicate which corner?
Right there, where the arrow is.
Okay.
There, yeah. There are currently eight parking spots on the site, and to expand the parking areas, the applicant would be required to do a site plan to show fencing, buffers, parking, and playground space. This parcel is in the neighborhood's character area on the future land use map, and uses such as this are allowed in the activity center, and staff is recommending approval of the request.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here? Yes, ma'am. Would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward and give us your name and home address. If you would, wait till you get to the microphone. These are recorded, so we want to make sure that it's loud and clear.
All right. My name is Michonne DeRay. My address is 881 Rollo Domino Circle, Evans, Georgia.
Okay, any additional information you'd like to give us?
Just hearing you guys talk about the street closing, initially I had stated that I would ask the parent to meet us at the corner to drop those children off if they were allowed to come to the center. But I noticed the other morning that I was there that children actually used that walkway to go back and forth to school. So if they're not able to drop them off at a certain time, then we would ask them to drop them off so before the time that the children get to use that road. Does that make sense?
Okay, and will the kids be on their own, or will you have employees there that escort them?
No, they will always be escorted. They will always be escorted, and if the parents. My goal is to utilize that school for business, because the demand is, because I previously have a daycare, the Sweet Pea Experience, but the demand is just so great now, because centers had to close because of COVID. So there are people working, and they don't have childcare, and I'm overflowing. So I need that particular building, which is probably five minutes for me walking to my other center, or.
Where's your other center?
My other center, if you can go back, I saw it on there. It's on Valdez Drive. It's 201 Valdez is where my other center is.
Can you, is there any way you can point it out here?
Direction? I am currently P1. Is that it?
Claywood and Columbia?
It's Columbia and Valdez.
Okay.
So we sit across from Aveline Church, the Circle K, and the Martinez Flowers, and we sit on that cul-de-sac, so.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Right there.
My store's right across the street from you.
Yeah, so we sit there now, but I don't have any, with the demand being so great, I think it would benefit children at that school and also the county as well.
So are we not, are we saying we're not going to ask them to drop them at the corner of Brockwood?
Oh.
Because the way you're going to have to get to it is to come through that neighborhood to that drop-off.
That's just during that one, that particular, that block of time. So during that block of time, they could either request us to meet their children in their pre-arranged agreement, which will be written up for them to see it as we give them a handbook. So if they need that service, then we provide that service, but if not, we won't. So it's kind of up to the parents. If they need that service, then we'll be able to meet it with staff. So we have to have a designated staff person to go meet those children and bring them back.
What's your busiest time in your existing center? When do you see the most of your drop-off traffic in the morning? I know it's probably pretty wide in the evening, but most everybody leaves work within an hour of each other.
I would say our business time is in the afternoon. We're like a drive-through McDonald's. It is really slam-packed with kids.
So you've got 30 kids with this, or 35 of this was written for, what time do you anticipate seeing those 35 drop-offs come, or say 18 or 20 since some brother or sister?
Drop-off in the morning time?
Right, right. I'm thinking about how many cars are going to be coming through this neighborhood in the morning to get to that drop-off point. All these old folks, you know, live on Pinehurst, and they don't want to see all 30 cars come through there every morning dropping off their children.
Well.
Just a thought that occurred to me about this. I mean, when does, between 6:30 and 7:30, you get all your kids there typically, or is it?
Right. It would be.
Nine, are they spread out?
So with me, I work for my parents, so it's according to what they need. So for me to say exactly what time it is, but hypothetically speaking, if someone wanted their child to be dropped off later than, or when the school is, when the road is closed, then I would have to designate the staff to go to that corner and pick up their child and then bring them, or the parent has the option to bring the child theirself. Because I noticed that other parents park on that adjacent road from us, and they actually get out their car and walk to go get their children.
They park on Pinehurst and walk their kids up Brockwood?
Yeah, the parents that utilize that school.
So there's already a mess of traffic going through.
Yeah, there's already that flow of traffic there, and that's where, I guess that was my point, that they're already utilizing.
At your existing center, in the morning time, when's your busiest?
Oh.
Half hour or so.
Because parents go to work different times, so we open at 6:00 AM, so they have from 6:00 AM to whenever, and that's my morning slot. And then I have mid-days, which is 11 to 7:00, and then I have evenings, which is, it used to be 2:00 PM to 12:00 midnight, but since COVID slowed down everything, we moved our hours back to 10:00, because we don't have enough staff to cover that at this moment. So we moved the staff back, because they was overworking and trying to meet those hours.
I've heard people talk about cyber affecting this business, saying that we have a need for a 24-hour daycare.
They do.
Is that a real thing?
That is. That is an existing problem. A lot of us could not stay open because we didn't have the funding. We weren't, because we wasn't considered as essential workers. But we still had essential workers that needed us, like the fire department. We had nurses, we had doctors that still needed us. We had gas stations still needed us. We had grocery store workers that needed us, and also, some of the parents were doing online classes, so they needed that break to do that, because they were always home with their children, so they dropped their children off in the afternoon with us. The centers that are still here in Columbia County probably are struggling, but it's coming back. So we just need that extra space.
Do we know if, who asked for Brockwood to be closed? Was it the school board, or was it Clay Whittle, or is it everybody pointed, everybody else wanted it closed? What's the story with that?
A lot of us staring across the table at each other, saying, I thought it was you. My understanding in talking with senior staff about this particular application was, and we actually are fortunate that one of our newest hires, our HR manager, came from the school board. came from the school board previously in his work experience. And they, it was my understanding from that conversation that the county did not request to have that street closure. It was not the sheriff's office that requested the street closure. And that the BOE may or may not have been the one, but there wasn't a third leg in that conversation to confirm that. One of the things that was noted that was most likely the situation was that closure has been going on for a number of years. And that was probably prior to the Martinez Elementary redevelopment of that site, the queuing line being extended and being much longer than it previously was. So we are actually going to reach out to the BOE and talk to them about whether that closure is still relevant. And if so, we can remove that, then that would be something we'd be interested in doing, of course. Because we're in the summer break, we now have a chance potentially to address that coming back to school in August.
So if I, if I go down there and school's in session and I drive down that road, is Clay Whittle going to write me a ticket? Or is the school board, police going to write me a ticket?
I believe it's the school board police. So I don't believe the sheriff's out there actively doing it. Now, they may request at times for assistance with traffic control, but it's my understanding that they're not tasked with that sole job.
So there's a pretty good likelihood that's going to open back up?
We are going to investigate that and see if that is a possibility. Because again, I don't think it's anybody on the Columbia County government side that's asking for that. So there's a good chance that some of the drop off and, you know, walk down the street stuff may resolve some of itself.
So if that happens, what's the ingress egress plan for the site? For parking for parents and how do we get kids off the street into the building? And you can, you can draw on that if you'd like to.
Put it on the
Yeah, my current landlord of this property, he has has parking lots in the back of the, oh, well, not the front of the building, which is the Flowing Wells Road. So the back of the building has four parking spaces behind it already. And then to the, if you're looking at the building from Flowing Wells Road to the right of that, there is parking spaces there. So there are maybe about six there that can be utilized. Again, right now at my current location, I only have, I think, one, two. I have six parking, I have six parking spaces, and I'm zoned for seventeen children.
What's the driveway situation, though? That's what we're curious about is, you know, cars in and out. These folks aren't coming shopping. They're just going to zip in, drop their children, zip back out.
They can't, yes, you can.
Please, certainly.
Right, I own the property. We had this situation last year. I didn't know, we did talk to the school. Somebody could tell us.
Closing Brockwood?
Brockwood, but we do have space on the side of the building from Brockwood. I think she's referred to it as four, but there's six or seven. Depending on where hundred foot fencing, you know, only four to five parked there. Property been rented to a personal care home, presently closed down. All my leases, I require them to share the driveway. So there is going to be a double driveway now from Flowing Wells. North end of it. If it is closed property they keep. That would alleviate a lot of the questions.
Gentlemen, any other questions?
Yeah. Well, Wells is widening, right? And this thing can grow to fifty seven. When that gets done, does that have an effect on how many kids it really can have? Square footage on the land?
I mean, the limitation on the square footage of the property relates to the amount of outdoor play area required. I'm going to assume that the playground would not be in front of the house anyway. I would think it's probably going to be back here. So the widening wouldn't impact the available space in that regard.
There is a grassy area. Parking on the way.
Yes, and then also, I know you guys are, you guys own entity. We also have to deal with Bright From the Start. So Bright From the Start is our, our parent company that comes in and they, they regulate every daycare there is in Georgia. So when they come in, they would, they would do their suggestions that I would have to follow, just like you guys, suggestions that I have to follow. And both of them have to meet. So where the playground area is, is always in the back. You don't want to risk a child running across the street or likelihood of somebody getting hurt or somebody end up in jail for not watching a child. So with that being said, it will be in the back of the building with the gate. Currently, Columbia County recommended a a six-foot gate around the back area that we have. Bright From the Start only wanted us to have a four-foot gate. So I just use that as an example to see how you two guys are so different. But Bright From the Start goes over what you guys do. So that's
One of the concerns I had when county over have had a ditch in front of the house and I never one of my arguments with them, this is going under drainage. I'm going to have to put up a fence or something across the front. Except for the driveway. But don't know what it's going to be until expected to be finished. After that, we will definitely do something over under and out. And there is going to be a bike lane and a sign along there too.
My concern is when school starts back and the volume of traffic and we're not sure what's going to happen about leaving, taking kids to a corner and then the volume of traffic on Flowing Wells Road. It just seems confusing to me that it's not been thought out completely about the best ways to do all this before we started this conversation.
I can't hear.
I said that I don't think there's a good enough plan with taking them back and forth to the corners and what we're going to do with Flowing Wells Road and whether this other road will close. There's so many if's in this whole situation before we even start talking about it, in my mind.
Okay. I just, Martinez Elementary has already established their school zoning. We're sitting right in the front. Martinez Elementary uses that Brookwood, as you call it, as a, as an aisle for the children to go back and forth into that neighborhood already. So the school zone has already approved that, that road right there. My, my only task would be to make sure that we had enough staff to do that. And if we can't do it, then we won't offer that service. They would have to just, they would just have to drop their kids off after that road opens. Or before the road closes.
It's an hour in the morning and an hour in the afternoon.
That would increase the traffic problem.
The other traffic with the other school.
That's what I mean.
Gentlemen, any other questions? All right, thank you, we may call y'all back up. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, under the circumstances with these questions not answered, I'd like to make a motion to disapprove RZ two one dash oh six dash oh two for daycare.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor of disapproval, raise your right hand? Motion disapproved carries four zero. Ms. Montgomery, rezoned from M one to TR, file RZ two one zero six zero three.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a rezoning at forty four fifty nine Wrightsboro Road from M one Light Industrial to TR Townhouse Residential. This is the location of the property on the north side of Wrightsboro Road to the west of Jimmy Dyes. I mean, it's the I twenty to the north. And the existing zoning map, there's quite a mix of zonings in this area. The property is currently zoned M one. It was partially rezoned by the county with the I twenty rezoning back in seventy seven. And then the remainder of the property was rezoned M one just last year. Adjacent properties to the north are our single-family residential. To the east, you have addition, existing industrial properties and a commercial zoning. To the west, this is an existing mobile home park. We have existing single-family residential and existing townhouse developments in the area as well. Says the area of the property is currently largely undeveloped. There is a small little vacant house at the front. And the existing site. And the applicants are requesting a rezoning to TR for the development of a townhouse community. And they have provided this development idea. We are not reviewing this as a conceptual plan. They did want to see how the rezoning went and what comments and conditions came out of that before submitting a formal concept plan. But they did submit kind of the idea on how this property may be laid out. Currently, it is showing seventy eight lots. That does meet the density allowed in the TR zoning district and four point seven acres of open space, including the fifty-foot buffer around the perimeter as well as interior park open space areas. They do meet the minimum open space requirement for this zoning district with this plan as presented. The development is intended to provide a similar aesthetic to Avonel Place, and they have submitted some photographs of that. So this would be the intended aesthetic for the buildings with the brick facades and the entrance landscaping. We do have conditions proposed that would kind of hold them to this type of design. There are some anticipated changes to the layout, particularly regarding the entrance. Traffic engineering has indicated that they're only going to get one access point on Wrightsboro Road. That means all of these units will have to be fire sprinkled. The applicants are aware of that and have indicated that they do intend to install those sprinkler systems for these units. The subject property is located within the Interstate Activity Center. This is a employment center. Primary future land uses include commercial and light and heavy industrial uses as well as higher density residential uses. The proposed use for townhouse development at the edge of the Activity Center provides the transition from the industrial development to the east, transitioning down to the single-family residential development further west, and is in keeping with the intent of the Activity Center to have higher density residential in these employment centers to support that activity. The proposed development plan includes dedicated open space and a narrative intent to develop the higher quality elevations and entrance landscaping. And we do have conditions proposed to hold them to that to help meet the standard of development and expected in an activity center. So we do have conditions regarding the entrance design and landscaping, the building elevations, and the open space provisions. And then traffic engineering also has the driveway conditions. And staff is recommending approval with those conditions.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? Is the applicant here this evening? Yes, would you like to come forward and give us any additional information? All right. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular rezoning?
What?
Seeing none, I will close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table. Then we can have discussion, Commissioner Dempsey.
Open. I'll make a motion to approve with conditions, file RZ two one zero six zero three, rezoning from M one to TR at four four five nine Wrightsboro Road.
Do you hear a second?
Thank you.
Any discussion?
What's the approximate size of these? So you don't know approximately?
Lots are thirty by eight.
Gentlemen, any other questions? Okay, the motion has been made and seconded. All in favor of approval for file RZ two one zero six zero three? Raise your right hand. All opposed? It's tied, so it would fail at a tie? Okay, so motion fails. All right, Mr. Butler, we've got two variances. You have the first, file V eight two one zero six zero one.
I have a request for a variance. Section nine has fifty-three listed a lot of structure requirements for four or three Lake Stone Way for a retaining wall as proposed at the back of the property. This is the location of the property in Barrington. Section three, if you're curious, and it's zoned R three, as is everything else around it. All there's some pot over here, I guess, honest. The aerial view of the site, we'll see it here in a moment. The wall will be at the back of the property. Also, the existing site and the plat of the property and the plant. So the wall that we're looking at tonight is this one that's here. It's about one hundred eighty-five feet across the back of the property. Currently, the design shows it being eleven feet from the property line here, six feet here and four feet from the back property line. On R three, your rear setbacks and side setbacks are ten feet. The wall, as long as it was under six, six feet or less, it wouldn't matter where it was in this situation. However, they do have a small section that goes up to seven feet in height. There is a request for a variance in order to reduce the rear building setback down to the four feet shown here. So we'll see next, in terms of the elevation, the entire wall is not seven feet in height. You can see it starts on the south side here, and then as it goes across, it gains height, maxes out at this point here at seven feet. It's only for about twenty feet of the wall that's actually over that six feet in height. You can see the plan view on the bottom here. Not really a big concern from staff. You're talking about a small section that's going over the six feet requirement. Really no issues from the planning side of things. There are two conditions from both stormwater management for an easement encroachment to be, agreement is required. That's currently in process. And water and sewer is doing a few things out there. They found a sewer manhole they didn't know about. So they're kind of working on that. And there may be a, an encroachment agreement for that as well. So you do have those two conditions to look at as well. Status agreement approval with
Would we have an encroachment agreement for the pool as well?
We would, and again, that's where the, I didn't go, it's far in depth on that one. But if the survey is needed and they can figure out where everything is, where that easement actually is, and so there may be an easement encroachment for the pool.
That'd be two separate or?
That would be two separate ones, because you have one for stormwater, one for water and sewer.
Okay.
Is there a reason why some, not purpose?
This is how the grading works. I didn't put it in there, but the topo is pretty rough, going back to the, back to the pond. What they're looking to do, can we go back to the site plan? What they're looking to do is provide basically usable space at the back of this property. They have a wall, or actually, this is the golf cart path, and there's the wall here. I believe the other wall is again, to provide, you know, kind of a tiered setup so they have flat areas at the back of the yard. Right now, it just, it drops off pretty, pretty good to the pond at the back.
Gentlemen, any other questions? This is a public hearing. Is the applicant here? Yep, would you all like to come forward and give us any additional information? Okay, thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone else that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with conditions of VA twenty one oh six oh one.
Do you hear a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor? Motion to approve carries four zero. Ms. Montgomery, our last item in the public hearings tonight, file VA two one zero six zero two, variance to section ninety dash one thirty-five signs.
Yes, sir, this is a request for a variance to the sign code at twenty one fifty Discovery Drive. This is the location of the property off Apling Harlem Road and I twenty, and currently zoned M two General Industrial as part of the White Oak Business Park. This is the area of the site. It is under construction, so it does look a little bit different than that, if anyone's been out that way recently. This is the current sign plan. The applicants have provided the complete sign package for the site. So there are two small monument signs here and here that both meet code. There is the Amazon logo sign, which is the principal building sign, which is the one that we are reviewing the variance for tonight. And then there is an additional or miscellaneous wall sign that is the Smile logo. And there are a couple other small wall signs on there that fall under that miscellaneous allowance as well. So this is the Amazon logo sign that we are primarily discussing tonight. The county sign code for principal building signage is based on the square footage of the building. We provide ranges for the building size and tie it to a specific wall sign allowance that starts out with any building up to twenty five hundred square feet getting sixty square feet of signage. The top bracket for that is buildings larger than fifty thousand square feet, which are allowed two hundred square feet of signage. The Amazon building that's under construction is quite a bit over fifty thousand square feet. It's a little over six hundred and twenty-two thousand square feet. feet, it's a little over six-hundred-and-twenty-two thousand square feet, um, that's obviously much larger than anticipated by our sign code. Again, tops out at that fifty thousand number, so their, their sign, as proposed, is three-hundred-and-thirty square feet, um, instead of the two-hundred that are allowed by code. Uh, the other wall signs are allowed under the miscellaneous, uh, building sign allowance. Interestingly, the building wall is so long, uh, that miscellaneous allowance is actually larger than their principal sign allowance, which is very unusual. Um, that is, they're allowed a quarter square foot per linear foot of building wall, they're actually allowed two-hundred-and-thirty-three square feet of additional signage beyond that principal wall sign. Uh, so they're quite a large building, not really anticipated by our sign code. Uh, this is the proposed monument sign and some of the proposed other miscellaneous signage. Again, this all meets code, and this is the existing site and the, the approximate location for the sign would be on this corner. This does face interior to the, the industrial park, um, so it's not really going to be visible from the public roads or from I twenty, it is interior to the site. Um, so it, it's not going to really impact any of the adjacent properties, and being within the industrial park and quite a bit larger than anticipated by our sign code, uh, staff has no concerns with recommending approval with conditions of the variance to the sign code. Uh, the only condition is just capping it at the three-hundred-and-thirty square feet as they've currently proposed the sign.
Gentlemen, any questions, staff? I've got one, uh, is, is there a master sign plan in place for the development as a whole, or is that something we're going to see in the future as well?
There is not currently a master sign plan in place for this development.
But if you'd like to grill the, uh, economic development, exactly.
I, I see him lurking around.
By all means, have at it.
Mr. Bennett, I assume you are representing the applicant tonight, would you like to come forward and shed a light on this for us, please, sir? Please tell us who you, we know who you are, but for the record.
Robbie Bennett, Executive Director for the Development Authority of Columbia County. Um, obviously White Oak Business Park is our industrial park, county's industrial park. Um, we do not have a master sign plan, and you know, has been wonderful in giving us, um, a layout of what one would look like, we are working through that, to actually incorporate that in the covenants that we are working to develop currently. Um, this standard works for us, um, make applicant, company happy to this, the only thing I wish is, hey, um, branding standpoint, but in the grand scheme of things, very small sign for the size of the building. All the footprints, what, twenty?
Over that, yeah.
So, um, we'll be seeing a master.
All right, how's the progress on the companion building?
Um, out there today, walls are going up, concrete's being laid, I can't believe how fast they're building.
Play did.
No, they do not. Quite impressive.
All right, sir, thank you very much. Uh, this is a public hearing, is there anyone here that would like to speak either for or against this particular variance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing and accept a motion to approve, deny, or to table.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to approve with condition file VA two-one-zero-six-zero-two, variance to allow the increase in the allowed wall signage at twenty-one fifty Discovery Drive.
Do it here a second.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any discussion? All in favor? Approve carries four zero. We have no legal matters, do we have any staff or commissioner comments?
Just give you the monthly update, or the bi-weekly update, I guess I should say. Um, we did get approval from DCA, so it will be on committee next, account plan update will be on the fifteenth, uh, commission agenda for approval and adoption of twenty-three-five comprehensive plan and vision.
Any other staff comments? Mister comments? I appreciate you all indulging me about, uh, Rich Henderson, he, again, has been a stand-up guy, and he's got a, a long road ahead of him, um, and then he, he's a stand-up guy, and he'll do a great job. Uh, do we have any public comments? Seeing none, I will ask for a motion to adjourn.
I move.
Do it here a second.
Second.
All in favor? Most to adjourn carries four zero, six fifty-four PM, next meeting is June seventeenth at six PM in these chambers. Thank you for coming out.